Meeting of January tenth at six oh five P M. Ms. Ms. Gallin, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Leonard, President, Mr. Luteri.
Yep.
Mr. Martucci.
Yep.
Ms. Swope.
Press it.
Ms. Barry.
Yeah.
And Ms. Powell.
Here. Mr. Luteri, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to a republic, where it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public moment tonight? Any delegates and visitors?
We have none.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of December?
Motion approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Swope. Ms. Gallin, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Luteri.
I'll abstain.
I think you have to abstain.
Oh, do I do it?
Yeah.
I'm abstaining. You're correct. Mr. Martucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swope.
Yes.
Ms. Barry. I can't hear, but I see the yes. And Ms. Powell.
Yes. Okay, can I get a motion, please, to approve warrant S B W twenty-two dash eleven in the amount of one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-two cents?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Luteri, second by Ms. Swope. Ms. Gallin, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Leonard.
Can I roll this one?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Luteri.
Yes.
Mr. Martucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swope, yes. Ms. Barry.
Yeah.
And Ms. Powell.
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve payroll warrant S P W twenty-two dash fourteen in the amount of eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, seven hundred, eight hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-five cents?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swope, second by Mr. Martucci. Ms. Gallin, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Luteri.
I'll abstain.
Mr. Martucci.
Abstain.
Ms. Swope, yes. Ms. Barry.
Yeah.
And Ms. Powell.
Yes. Do we have any budget transfers tonight?
Nope.
All right, seeing then, do we have any buildings or grounds?
We do not.
Okay, um, any subcommittees, we did not meet, and can we have the superintendent's report?
Yes. So first, welcome to our new member, Ms. Leonard, Ms. Leonard, and our town council president and a new member, Mr. Luteri, and congratulations to our returning members, and now Chairwoman Powell and Vice Chair, Ms. Julie Barry. So I look forward to working with each of you as we move forward, as well as the rest of our committee. So it's an exciting time for us to start anew, which is a nice thing to do during, during COVID. Volunteer Assistant Athletic Director Frankie Fabiano asked that I communicate his congratulations as well. I spoke with Frankie earlier this afternoon, so he congratulates you as well. So I'm going to start with what I typically start with, which I feel like has gone on now for two years, is a COVID update. Student staff and absent data from this week and last week. So student absences this, this past week and up through today, a little less today, but hovering around a hundred students per building. This does not indicate that all of those students are COVID positive, but it is definitely a dramatic shift in the numbers prior to the winter break and since the Omicron variant outbreak. We are also seeing steadily increasing absences with our district staff, having twenty absences of staff last Monday, twenty-five staff members on Tuesday, thirty-two point five on Wednesday, which means someone had a half a day, thirty-nine staff members on Thursday, and thirty-nine point staff, five staff members today. The uncertainty surrounding staffing and student absences due to the level of this contagious Omicron variant has left us with a great deal of uncertainly, of uncertainty during the weekend as we head in to the following week. Contact tracing is now becoming almost impossible to determine where the positive cases are coming from as it relates to other things like identifying how often spreading may be happening, whether it's within our schools or if it's stemming from the outside, such as household contacts, gatherings, et cetera. Given the number of cases at this time, it's, it's really difficult and become overwhelming to do the contact tracing with the staff that we have. It should be understood that we have one, one school nurse per building. We also have a COVID lead nurse who has been our, our lead school nurse for a number of years. We have assistant nurses, so students that are, I'm sorry, not students, nurses that are certified nursing assistants that have been helping our nurses with a number of things, from general day-to-day school nursing business, dealing with students who are feeling ill, students who have maybe fallen at recess and need a Band-Aid, students who need throat lozenges, or just need somebody to chat with, as well as the contact tracing. Even with the staffing that we have, this still has been taking a toll on the nurses. And I can't say enough about our nursing staff showing up to work every day, many of them working through the weekends, doing contact tracing, notifying families, working with our athletic and extracurricular teams who are in our schools on Saturdays and Sundays, quite often either playing a game or practicing for drama or, or other activities. We're going to continue, given the number of cases at this time, again, it's been very difficult to accurately conduct our contact tracing. This is not different than other school systems across the state, as I meet with multiple superintendents and other various leaders and sit in on conference calls with the commissioner. This is pretty similar to what's happening everywhere else. We're going to continue to make every effort to communicate with our families with the close contacts related to their students. However, we're at a point where we're assuming that exposure either in school or in the community is occurring, and much more frequently with this Omicron variant. While this doesn't mean that we're going to stop any of our mitigation strategies, such as masking, distancing as, as much as possible within the school, it does mean that we need to continue to look at more sustainable practices that'll allow us to continue to keep our staff on site, support our staff, our students and our family, and our families. So what does the level of absence really mean? It's clear from the data that contact tracing and test and stay are becoming more difficult to sustain with the percentage of positive cases in the community, as well as within our school. As stated above, we're going to continue to implement our mitigation strategy measures that we can control, the mask wearing, the attainable distancing, the cleaning procedures, and contact tracing to the degree that it is feasible. We're also strongly encouraging families to get their students vaccinated and boosted, if applicable, and to keep their children home if they're symptomatic or if there is a known positive case within the house. I think it's critically important that our families understand that we recognize the difficulty in keeping your students home, but we also respect your choice as a parent on a given day, whether it's freezing cold out, which tomorrow may be, and yes, we are open tomorrow, or whether you have concerns about your child being sick or having one, two, or many symptoms of COVID. We respect your judgment as a parent with your own student. And attendance has always been critical to us. We, we want our students in school. I think we've shown that by staying open as much as possible. The snowstorm on Friday is something that's unavoidable. I do think it's something that kids enjoy, having a snow, having a snow day. I think it's the right of every child to have a snow day, that's me. It's always a risk as a superintendent, you stay up all night long wondering, you sleep for an hour and then you get back up. I don't, for some people that are new here, some people who are not. My first year as a superintendent, I think I was into the business for about four, four months. I was the rookie on the team of the North Shore superintendents, and we do get together and see who's doing what, because whether you believe it or not, everybody compares us to the people who surround us, although we are very different. And the norista that we had did what happens on the North Shore of, of this state, and it blew out to the sea. And I woke up at four o'clock in the morning to my husband telling me, oh my God, you're in trouble, there's not a flake of snow on the ground. I did text my, my five district partnership group of superintendents and said, I am a rookie, do I get a do-over? And they told me no. None of them had the do-over either, and there was no snow on the ground and we didn't have school. There was probably about two thousand kids that thought I made a great move, and probably about, I don't know, four thousand or more parents that said, well, she might not be the right fit for this school district. That happened again this week. I called school off at two-thirty on Friday. From what people tell me, there was some Facebook discussions as to why I did that, why did I do it so early? It's probably going to blow over as if I didn't know that that was a possibility. And I did it because I'm concerned about our parents and our families being able to make arrangements for childcare, making sure kids eat, making sure they have somebody to watch them during the school day. And then I prayed for six to eight inches of snow. So this time I was lucky and we did have that snow. We also had a, a point in time, this, the Omicron variant was hitting us hard, so we were beginning to experience something we'd never experienced before. As I stated before, and, you know, we had an average Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of over a hundred kids out per building. We've never had that. Now, whether every child tested positive for COVID or not, it speaks to the concern that the community has. I know that the community numbers were extremely high during the week of, of the winter break. I know that because I communicate with Meredith Hurley about eleven times a day, so I know those numbers were high. So whether kids were out because they had the common cold, some type of a virus, Omicron, or something else, that number over a period of, of three or four days in a row is something that we've never seen. We also started to see a significant increase in staff members who were testing positive. As many of you know, the Department of Education gave us rapid tests to provide to all of our staff members a little later than we would have liked it, so they gave it to us. It was supposed to be the Saturday at the end of vacation, I would have liked it the Saturday before. We had no idea it was coming. We didn't get it that Saturday. Town of Winthrop supported us by letting us borrow their rapid tests that they had in their coffers, and we were able to distribute those to our staff. Many of our staff that did test positive had zero symptoms and were not planning on testing because they were not sick. But what that did for us on Monday was left us with a large amount of staff members absent. So I'm just going to give you a little brief overview, that on the Monday that we returned from vacation, we had eight staff members absent at the Gorman Fort Banks, four at the Cummings, five at the middle school, and three at the high school. At, on those, in those same schools, in terms of students that Monday, we had a hundred and thirty-five students absent at the Gorman Fort Banks, ninety-five students absent at the Cummings, eighty-three students absent at the middle school, and a hundred and thirteen students absent at the high school. Again, numbers that are, are not familiar to us and concerning. When you have one or two teachers out, maybe three or four teachers out, you can cover. You call in substitutes. As many of us know, because you've heard me cry about it for about three years in a row now, we don't have a wealth of substitutes out there. We did do some pre-gaming, and we asked that any students, college students that were home during the break, the college break, if they would please help us out, come in and get their fingerprints done well before the vacation so that we could call upon them. For that Monday, we also called in a number of substitutes, as many as we could find, whether we knew we needed them or not, so that we could cover our classes. The next day, which was Tuesday, the numbers increased in staffing, I won't bore you with them, but I will provide you with them in a written document after this meeting, and the numbers of students increased in each one of those buildings. On the third day, which was Wednesday, the numbers became a little bit higher, some, some a little lower in buildings in terms of staff and others higher, but continued to average around six to ten, and the highest eleven on Wednesday. And the numbers of the students started to level off a little bit. We had on Wednesday eighty-seven students out at the Gorman Fort Banks, eighty-seven at the Cummings, ninety-four at the middle school, and ninety-five at the high school. And then on Thursday, we started to get a little more nervous. We had fourteen teachers out at the Gorman Fort Banks, seven at the Cummings, nine at the middle school, and nine at the high school. Again, not everybody has COVID, but many of our staff members, and staff includes cafeteria workers, custodial staff, teachers, ESPs, each one who play a very important function and role in our schools, keeping our kids safe with the multiple mitigations that we have in place, from cleaning to getting ready for food, to supervising our kids to keep their distance during lunch when their masks are off and at recess and outside time when our kids are playing. And our student numbers went back up again on Thursday to the average of a hundred, and at a high, at the high school, a hundred and twenty-two students out. And then came the snow day. And the snow day was, was timely, and we figured it would give us Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we really didn't have a choice because of the weather, but it was a good time for us to electro, electrostatically clean our buildings. If you remember back when we were preparing for mitigation strategies, we used COVID-19 state monies to purchase electrostatic machines where custodial staff could go through classrooms and building spaces in about a tenth of the time, and sanitize desks, chairs, handrails, common touch spaces in a, in a quick fashion. So that gave us the time to do that Friday, and then throughout the weekend, while our custodial staff continued to shovel and, and clear walkways and salt and sand. Then Sunday night hit, another night of minimal sleeping for many of our staff members, including our administration, trying to figure out what Monday was going to bring. And so, Monday brought about. Today, Gorman Fort Banks, we had ten and a half teachers, and again, not a half a body showed up, somebody I had to leave midday for, for staff members. At the Cummings School, we were down thirteen staff members, the middle school, we were down eight again, and the high school, again, at eight. In terms of our students, we're starting to look a little bit better. We, we had eighty-three students out today at the Gorman Fort Banks, sixty-eight at the Cummings, seventy-four at the middle school, and eighty-eight students out today at the high school. So clearly, things are not going away, but they seem to be improving on the student side, but our staff members are continuing to struggle. I can't credit the creativity and the support and the extra step-up of our staff members. We have had people in classrooms who have not been in classrooms before. Our teachers are diligent in leaving their substitute teaching plans, but it's an impact, it's an impact on our students, it's an impact on our staff, and we are taking this day by day. So I want to give a big shout-out to the staff for showing up, staying home when they're sick, testing as they need to test, and continuing to support each other and cover for each other as needed, and I hope we can continue on this path, and hopefully, student enrollment continues to, student attendance continues to improve, and I'm hoping that staff attendance continues to improve. This is not an easy fix. This is a day-to-day, minute-to-minute coverage issue that we are having, and the last thing we want to do is close the doors to the winter public schools at all. We are not doing that tomorrow due to cold. I know the Boston Public Schools is doing that. We are one one-hundredth of the size of Boston Public Schools, and certainly, we don't face many of the same issues that they do. Two of the things we do face that they, that they face are student supervision, little ones and, and even high school kids being left home alone, and eating. So being open allows us to have our kids here, available, have food available, have heat available. We are blessed in some way strategically with our buildings in terms of our air quality and our ability to keep our, our schools open with high-level filtration systems, MERV and I know this by the back of my hand, MERV fifteen-plus filtration systems, which are the best, if not better than the best, and really just dealing day-to-day with our, with our staffing issues. So we will be open tomorrow. Something else that I think is important to talk about is vaccination status. As families know, because they received probably fifteen different emails from me asking them to update their vaccination status of their students, our staff has received the same. We recognize that vaccination is a personal choice, however, we encourage it, and so we've asked parents and staff members to continue to submit their updated vaccination status. We use that information to help us with contact tracing, to help determine who has to stay home and isolate if they have been exposed, and those who, who do not. The ever-changing guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in combination with the Mass Department of Public Health, and sometimes in conflict with the CDC, that continuously changes. So having that vaccination status allows us to react quicker, get, keep kids in classrooms faster, and notify parents in, in a more diligent manner. We have currently, so we have a system that we put in place where people upload their data, and it goes into a portal in which the nurses can verify that somebody has submitted their full vaccination status, regardless of when you were vaccinated, which again is a, is where the conflicts with CDC come through. We are taking vaccination status from day one of vaccinations. At the high school level, we have two hundred and five students currently documented as vaccinated out of five hundred and sixty-five students, and we have fifty-five staff members that we are, have currently submitted all of their documentation. At the middle school, of, out of four hundred and thirty-four students, we have a hundred and seventy-one students that are, that have submitted their vaccination status, and sixty-two of our staff members. At the Cummings School, now this is with younger students, in which vaccination availability has recently become available to them, we have seventy-one students out of four hundred and fourteen students who have submitted their vaccination, and fifty-six of our employees. At the Gorman Fort Banks, where there are four hundred and ninety-three students, and that includes preschool students, some of who are ages three and four and not eligible for vaccination, we have eighty-one students vaccinated and sixty-nine staff members. Staff members are inclusive of anybody who works underneath the roof of that particular building, cafeteria staff, substitute teachers, regular staff members, daily staff members. So we continue to encourage folks to submit that for the sole purpose of assisting us with contact tracing and let, letting us know how we can move forward if there is such a case in which somebody may need to isolate. Now the good news. So some good news. We've remained open, and we're keeping our students learning. We've become very creative with class coverage, however, it has not been easy. COVID hospitalization rates for those under the age of eighteen remain extremely low, and the risk of serious illness or, illness or disease for young people also remains low. Most who have tested positive so far that we have had eyes on in terms of students and staff in the winter public schools have had mild symptoms and in some cases, no symptoms at all. Students and staff have been extremely cooperative, another bit of good news. And I wanted to shout this out and put it on a, on a flyer, perhaps a flagpole, which with all due respect to President Luteri, I know that's a subject that we won't talk about, I, I would like to put a huge thank you out to every single student that attends the winter public schools. Our kids have worn their masks, have not waved, they are children. Their masks fall below their nose, we tell them to pick it up. Their masks fall off, we have them put it on. They forget to wear one, we give them one. Our students are incredibly compliant. Our staff members have been incredible in terms of making sure our students and fellow staff members are following that same protocol. It's one of the main reasons that we have not had in-school spread. If you look at the data prior to the Omicron virus, most of our positive cases have been singletons. Why? Because we follow the rules within the school. What happens outside of school is difficult for us to manage. We have students on sports teams, our sports teams wear masks in the locker room, inside the building, outside games, the rule is you don't have to wear one. Some kids still do, and that's fine, and we're totally fine with that and respect that, but they do not have to. What happens on the weekends, what happens at night, what happens in family gatherings are things that are outside of our control. So although we still had COVID positive numbers, that which we were seeing be a result of in-school spread, we're just not there. Some more positive things, we can, like I said, continue to ensure mask wearing, we're continuing our test and stay program at this point, and ventilation and the hygiene measures that we have in place in our school system remain in place to maximize the healthy environment that we have. Now for the challenges that we're confronting. We'll start with the Omicron variant, has caused much concern for us. The surge in cases over the past two weeks has challenged our staffing, our school attendant, and our school attendance across the district, and certainly is impacting school instruction, school operations, and learning. How to learn, how to operate, and how to instruct if you're not here. So that is a given. Students' academic needs and their mental and social emotional health needs are critical, and they need our continued attention, and we need our kids here to be able to do that with the staff that we have. Another challenge is the increase in the rapid testing that we're doing and, and positive results of that, coupled with the decrease in access to PCR testing across the Commonwealth. Another thing that we have absolutely zero control over is people's avail, you know, folks' availability to get a PCR test. We're not requiring in the past two weeks PCR test results to prove that you're positive, we're accepting that, the rapid home test. And again, another point is not, not everybody reports that to us, because you don't have to. We would like you to, but you do not have to. We encourage parents, if you do have a positive rapid test, to report that to us so we can keep account of the number of positive cases we have. Another challenge is the rapid changes in the quarantine and isolation protocols that require our constant attention, and as many of you know, my constant communication with staff and families. This information can be and has been very frustrating and confusing to many, as there has been conflicting guidance from CDC as it relates to what's being implemented, recommended, and required by the Department of Education and the Mass Department of Public Health. We are going to continue to follow, as we have since day one, March twentieth, March fifteenth of 2020, we have followed the Mass Department of Public Health and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's suggestions and requirements. Wavering from that and following additional requirements at this point in time is still not recommended based on the confusion that we are all facing. However, our continued involvement with our own town health department, Meredith, Ms. Meredith Hurley, and our COVID lead nurse and our other nurses, that's always a, an open discussion and a continuous discussion. How are we going to continue to prioritize the health of our schools and our learning? We're going to prioritize classroom instruction by assigning appropriate staff to assist with the high rate of absenteeism. We're going to continue to work closely with the town health nurse and our own nursing staff to determine next steps or any change in our practices and our attention to daily contact tracing in a manner that we can handle it. We're going to continue to update parents, as annoying as it is, with the recent health guidance. At, at six forty-five tonight, parents will receive a flow chart, which we have come across, that we think will provide some clarity for our parents. You read through that guidance and, you know, someone like me, after thirty-five seconds, I'm thinking about other things, or I'm reading and I'm not really understanding what I'm reading, and then I think I read something, and then I'm not sure, my kid has a cold and can he go to school? I have no idea. So we've sent out a clarifying document, which is still difficult to read, but we think it'll be a little bit of better visual for parents to be able to follow, and always when in doubt, pick up the phone and call the school. Please be patient with our nurses. They are doing way more than they've ever done, and if they don't answer the phone right away, leave them a message and they will get back to you. We're going to continue to encourage our families to vaccinate and provide us with updated data, and continue to respect their thoughts on vaccination. We're going to continue to closely monitor our athletic and extracurricular activities to mitigate spread, our student athletes and our extracurricular clubs, even though there's not as many administrators floating around the building after three o'clock, our coaching staff has been well-schooled, and we've spoken to our staff many a times and our students. You know, we've had to close locker rooms before, and we've closed locker rooms because we had a concern about people not keeping their masks on when they were behind closed doors. We haven't had to do that, we had to do that once. Kids learn fast, and we have not had to do that again. And we're going to continue to consistently follow the recommendations of D E C and D P H and maintain transparency with our families by communicating frequently. So tonight- Uh, so tonight, uh, the D E S I and D P H updates, a link to that will be going out to parents. Also, um, an update on the COVID protocols with the flow chart. And something new, which came across my desk today, uh, which was an extension of the mask mandate through the Department of Education. The commissioner today released his extension of the mask-wearing requirements within school settings through February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. The department will continue to work with medical experts and state health officials to evaluate the mask requirements beyond February twenty-eighth. I can tell you as soon as I know about any changes in that mask requirement, uh, the committee as well as our families will also be updated. In terms of, uh, COVID, that's all I, I feel like that's all I do twenty-four seven. Uh, that is my update, uh, on that. And one other item on my list is budget planning. I gave you tonight and I think this might be the third time I've given it out, but I've adjusted it a little, which is the, um, our, our budget planning document in terms of the dates that we are, um, undertaking that process. We at the school level are deep into reassessing, as we do every year, everything that we have, everything that we need and those things that we no longer will be needing. And that's in terms of materials, supplies, contracts with outside agencies, staffing. Um, this year will be a little bit different because obviously our needs have significantly changed from last year, even though last year was, uh, a significant change from the year before. Uh, we also have a number of grants and state-funded, uh, grants such as the ESER one, two, and three money. ESER one and two funds from the state are just about dried up within the district. Uh, but the ESER three grant has been submitted and we are awaiting, uh, their approval. Once that grant has been approved, we will be posting it on the website. We looked at the needs of that grant, um, based on a two-year, three, three, three-year time span, this being year one, next year being year two and the following year being year three. It in, it allows us to, um, to, to fund staffing and other mitigation strategies that we have put in place during COVID that there would be no way we could sustain without additional monies from the Commonwealth. And so, once that has been approved, we'll be sharing that. That was a, uh, a huge effort on the part of, uh, Ms. Lauren Galvin, who's our executive director of curriculum instruction and anything COVID or anything I can't handle on a given day, uh, and all of our administrators and our staff. Um, and it definitely was based on this past school year, this current year, and where we see ourselves going with an understanding of what we are, um, headed for in terms of a budget as a whole from the, from the town. So it's balancing a typical budget of the whole and then what are the additional things that we have put in place that we know that we can't do without, um, or things that we have started that we would like to finish. So more to come on that. Um, and I didn't necessarily read from my superintendent's report in full, so I probably left a few things out. Um, but, uh, that is my superintendent's report, Ms. Powell.
Fantastic. Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Swob.
Thanks, Agent. Uh, I, I wonder, is the state gonna help us out on, on tests at all? I mean, I know they did with the, the staff.
Yeah, so, as of right now, so if, if I have to talk about their history and, and by no means am I, uh, being disrespectful towards the Department of Education, I'm not hopeful. Um, they did promise us, uh, test, a, a test kit with two tests for every employee in our school district to be given out, um, the weekend before they were coming back from the break. By the time we got those, we were told to open every box. If you've bought a, a test before from C V S or, I was gonna say Osco Drug. I don't think they have that anymore. Uh, wherever you got it, or if you got one from the town, it's a box that comes with two, um, rapid test kits in it. By the time we picked those up, we were told that we had to open up that box and separate them because no longer we were getting one box with two tests for every staff member. We were getting one test per staff member. Um, you know, so now we probably have to hire more staff to come and open boxes. What they forgot was that inside those boxes, one set of directions. It's one set of directions in every box. Some schools had to copy directions. This school did not do that. We were fortunate, um, to have the town help us out with some additional supplies and agree for us not to have to give them back exactly what we borrowed. Um, there is no indication, although they say that there, there could be more coming. Um, I asked, uh, as did probably of the three hundred and twenty superintendents in the Commonwealth, I think three hundred and twenty of us asked, can we have that same thing for students? So communities were given at, at, at a different point in time, communities were given an allotment of test kits. Some communities were given much more, as typically happens to our peninsula, than a community like Winthrop. Um, so they could afford to have given what they had in their coffers to staff and students before vacation. Winthrop did not have that level of supply on hand. However, they did distribute much of their supply to many of our neediest families, um, which included families with, with children. Um, I would love to say that I have a letter that says you're gonna be getting X amount more test kits. I do not have that. Um, I will be meeting with, on a commissioner's call. Uh, usually I find out on Thursday that it's at three o'clock on Friday. Um, and we will be asking for that again. We are, uh, right now, aside from our binax testing for our test and stay program, um, we are just about out of, for the school side, we're out of any additional test kits. So it's a long way of saying, I have no idea if we're getting them or not.
What's so tragic about it, it's, it's thirty dollars a test. And thirty dollars is a lot. I mean, it does have two, I'm sorry, it is two tests.
And if you can even find them.
Yeah, well, like, if you go online, I think you can probably, huh? I wa, I found some tonight, but I'm just saying, it's very hard for parents then if their children are getting better and they've been home and they think they had COVID, but let's say they didn't test, they think they had. And it's very hard to know. You'd like to send them back knowing that they're okay.
Right. And we'd love to be able to, although we don't have the staff to test every child as they walk through the door north. By the time they get into class, it would be four thirty, so we probably wouldn't be able to do that.
I just think it's, it's unfortunate that, um.
Yes. Well, we lost, really, it would be great to have the supply, but, um, I'm not being told we're getting anything.
Any other questions?
Ms. Howard, thank you for keeping the schools open. I know that that has been a great challenge, particularly with all of these absences. And I think that ultimately that is benefiting our students, although I know that there's gonna be some academic challenges as well. Um, do we have any homeschool applications?
Actually, I do. I have, um, we have one sixth-grade student who has applied for homeschooling and we have one third-grade student who has applied to be homeschooled. Uh, and they currently have, um, there are other children, the, the plans are robust and accepted. So I would recommend that, um, that you accept them.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion to accept the homeschool applications?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Mr. Lettieri. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Galvin, can you take a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Lettieri.
Yes.
Mr. Martucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Barry, who lost? Ms. Powell.
Yes. Do we have any appointments, resignations, retirements, postings or leave of absence?
We have one posting and this is for a physical education teacher at the Gorman Fort Banks. That's the result of an upcoming retirement. And we have no, uh, no appointments, resignations, retirements or leaves of absence for this meeting.
Okay. Under new business, um, can I get a motion to waive the second reading and, um, and approve and adopt the policies related to our residencies, admission and transfer of students, homeless children and unaccompanied youth policies and the education opportunities for children in foster care?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Swob, second by Mr. Martucci. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a vote?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Lettieri.
I understand.
Mr. Martucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Barry. Ms. Powell.
Yes. Under unfinished business, I have the superintendent's goals. Has there been any change or?
We're just gonna wait for the next member to, um, be named.
Okay.
Hopefully the council president will get that done quick. Um, set up a meeting, get that done. But, uh, we're just gonna wait for that last person to come on so that we can start those, uh, the rules.
Okay. Fantastic. Um, is, uh, seeing no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Ms. Leonard. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Lettieri.
Yes.
Mr. Martucci.
Yes.
Ms. Swob.
Yes.
Ms. Barry. Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Thank you all.